Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley and the Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, November the 5th, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seabord.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, October 15th, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have three pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $255,849.33. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
I have one observation on page two, almost six from the bottom. Two hundred, almost 200,000 of this is a trash truck that has been bought and paid for. So I appreciate the Clerk's office on doing that. I appreciate Brad's work on this. So we have a brand-new trash truck in service as we speak, paid for. So thank you. So I wanted to bring that to the public's attention because we now have a three, a fleet of three trash trucks, and there is no debt. So, any questions or comments from Board members?
No.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated November the 5th, 2018, in the amount of $255,849.33.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting, and we have no new businesses tonight. So comments from Board members?
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:03 PM. We will go right into the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting once Dan has reset. Welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public, in lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seabord.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, October the 15th, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have nothing.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have 34 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,006,851.17. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none. Thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated November the 5th, 2018, in the amount of $1,006,851.17.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, we have three items under unfinished business. The first item is bid award for the South Fourth Street paving. And I'll defer to Brian Pearson from United.
Good evening, Board. United Consulting has reviewed and summarized and tabulated the bids received at the last Board of Public Works meeting. If you'll recall, there were four bids submitted ranging from approximately $110,000 to $148,000 for roadway and related items work on South Fourth Avenue. It was mostly resurfacing the roadway, a little bit of full-death patching, reconstructing some curb ramps to ADA standards, as well as installing some brand-new sidewalk on certain portions of that road that were missing sidewalk altogether. The lowest responsible bidder was the, also the lowest apparent bidder, Robertson Paving, at $110,206. All of their paperwork was in order, all of the documents fully signed and provided, and therefore is our recommendation that the project be awarded to Robertson Paving. As some additional information, this was also the project that we requested community crossing matching grants from. I believe that number was somewhere in the ballpark of $45,000, $46,000 of what we were receiving for that. It's typically supposed to be a 50-50 match. In this case, our cost estimate leading up to the bid was about $92,000. The prices came in a little bit high, whether that's because of fluctuation of material costs. Being so late in the year sometimes affects what contractors are willing to bid on, as well as the fact that we have not actually received approval from NDOT that we have that community crossing funding. So we've put clauses into this contract with Robertson Paving, should it be signed, that, number one, the project will only be awarded if the City of Beech Grove has awarded the matching funds from NDOT. Number two, the project will be completed either later this year, if the award is made prior to a certain date, or the construction will be finalized next year if we don't get as much advance notice as we like. The timeframe, we're kind of at NDOT's mercy here, the timeframe was given as late October to early November when we would find out if we were awarded the matching grants. And as of yet, I know I still haven't heard unless the Mayor has heard, Brad has heard differently.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
So if we're still waiting to get word on the grant?
Right.
Is that going to delay the project?
The way we have written the contract is that if we get that notice that the city has been awarded the additional funding before November 10th, that's kind of our cutoff. We determine that was enough time to build the project this year still, we will hold the contractor to building the project this year. That's their contract final date, and then there'd be penalties and stuff after that if they didn't. If we do not hear until after that date, I believe the date is April 30th or sometime early next spring, theoretically, they, there is work that they could get started on this year. And we have a pre-construction meeting scheduled later this week to kind of discuss those options with them, what they're willing to do, what they're not willing to do, pending that notification from NDOT. I would also point out, too, that the $46,000 that we received matching, that's, that's already set, that's been determined. So unfortunately, the, the little bit of overage of the, well, the approximately $20,000 of, of above the engineer's estimate is going to sway that split a little bit from being 50-50 to having to be covered entirely by the local agency.
Thank you.
Dave, any?
No, I have nothing.
No other further questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve, the engineer's request to approve Robertson Paving pending NDOT approval.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
That being the case, I do have several signatures that we could get on the upcoming contract documents, if you want to pass these around now or later.
I got one right up here, Brian.
Okay. And I have copies of the notice to proceed and notice of award letter as well, if you don't have those handy.
I do.
Okay.
And I will leave for your records the bids that we received.
Thank you, Brian.
Hold on to. And I'll gladly take the signed contracts and letters, and we will move on to Robertson Paving and get this project started. Do you have two copies of the contract, one for yourself to keep and one for?
No, I have one. Well, I wasn't going to get two. You just give us a copy of Robertson.
You can do that.
Thank you. This is ours, Dan. Okay, thank you. And then, Board, with that, I'll ask for a motion to proceed with the work, provided it's approved by NDOT.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Brian, can you please approach?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
Dan, this is ours.
Okay, thank you.
Next order of business is notice to proceed approval concerning the Redford Drive drainage Board, we have, we approved the award to Smith Projects at the previous meeting. And now, I, I'm asking for a motion to approve the notice to proceed so they can begin the work on Redford Drive. So we meet this week, and they will need a notice to proceed.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well and the motion carries. This is Smith Projects. Here you go. Just present that to them when we meet this week. Thank you. This is our copy, Dan. That concludes unfinished business. On to new business, we have several items. First is the request to hire police officer chief.
Good evening. Dear Mayor and Board, I am requesting to hire Brockton Level as a probationary police officer. Mr. Level will be hired on November 17th, 2018. He will do his field training and then attend the law enforcement academy. He has been assigned a position at the academy, and if you approve him to be hired, his pay will start at $51,0916.
Thank you. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none. Thank you.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry.
I got a comment. I don't believe there's money in the budget to hire this police officer.
Really?
Yes.
The position's been approved for the last two or three years.
It was approved for the last two years, you're correct.
It was approved for the first edition.
But with the money that is going to each additional police officer, there will be not, there won't be sufficient amount of money in there to hire him.
Chief, is your?
That's, that's not what our calculations show.
Board, any thoughts?
The money that was going to hire or to pay for these was coming out of the public safety, is what I was told.
We can't pay salaries for, out of public safety. You can pay overtime, but not salaries.
Is this the meal thing? Is that what you're talking about?
That's.
No, I thought this was.
That's a portion of the reason why there's not money available.
This was approved last year on the budget for this year.
And you're right, it was budgeted two years.
But it was, I thought it was budgeted again for '19.
Well, it's budgeted for this year to hire one, and then next year for, this would be the 35th officer, and the 35th officer was approved to be paid for.
Well, I would, I would recommend we hi, we approve the hiring based on the ability to pay. That's my recommendation, and I'll ask for a motion to.
I agree.
To approve. Dave?
I would agree with that.
A motion to approve, I need a second?
I'll second.
Nope.
I'll make, I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. I thought this was budgeted for.
This was budgeted for this year to pay for him, and it's also for 35 officers for next year, was figured in the budget.
And it should, there should be funding there. That's, I haven't seen it, but.
No, the funding got all messed up when they did $1,500 per police officer, and that, there is not funding to pay for a police officer.
Dan, when you say $1,500 per police officer, what are you referring to?
Meal allowance that was, went through on the last meeting. It's got to come from somewhere. The only place it can come from is salaries. So that leaves a shortfall where there's not money in there to pay this officer.
Well, it can't come out of public safety. It's not, it's not a wage.
It's a law.
Well, I know it's a law, but I'm telling you, I don't think it's a wage.
Why wouldn't it be a wage?
Well, it's a meal allowance. You don't tax a meal allowance.
No, this and the meal allowance, it's parity. There's a difference, it went to their baseline pay, the fire department.
Okay, let me ask you this then. Did you, did you tax the, did you tax the fire guys on the 1,500?
I, I don't know how they're taxed on that.
The answer's no. You can't.
I believe it will be because it's going to go on their base pay.
I'm telling you, it's not salary.
Well, I disagree.
I'm, I'm telling you what the law is, so, but anyway, you don't get taxed on, on meals.
It's not going to be for meals. It goes to their base pay for the fire and the police.
But it's not a wage.
And that is a salary.
It's not a wage, Dan.
It is, it goes to their base pay.
It's not a wage.
If their base pay is $50,000, that's what they're going to get taxed on.
Explain what you mean by parity. You made a distinction, I want to make sure I understand, the parity, and what was the other thing you said? Between parity and wages?
No, it's parity. When the fire department was approved to put that on their base pay, and the police asked for $1,500 per police officer, that goes to their base pay also.
Yeah.
So it is a taxable amount.
It's not a wage. But, okay. Let me ask you this, are you going to refuse to pay this police officer's salary if he's hired?
If it's not, if it's not there, I can't pay him something I don't have.
But it is there.
That's according to you or the chief? I say it's not.
So you, so the answer is you'll refuse to pay it?
I can't pay something that is not there.
How do you determine if it's there?
What the budget would be for salaries.
So the vacant officer, you're taking that money out, and you're taking the 1,500 for all those police officers and taking it out from that budgeted hire, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying I'm taking it from the hire, I'm taking it out of salaries. That's the only place it can come from.
But it comes out of that 35th police officer?
I don't know where it's coming from. It's salaries, and that's all I can do on it.
The budget was figured and passed by the council.
And that was before the 1500.
With all the salaries, with the 2% increase in the $1,500 that was turned in, and the council approved that budget being turned in.
And that's before 50-some thousand was approved for an increase.
No, that 1,500 was included in the budget that we turned in.
No.
It was approved by the council.
What did Assistant Chief say he could pay that out of? That extra 1,500, there was a, something he said in the budget he could pay that out of. I, I can't remember what it was.
It was public safety tax.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
So it's not a wage, it can come out of there?
A wage cannot come out of public safety.
Right. But a meal allowance could.
It's not a meal allowance. There's no such thing as a meal allowance.
Overtime comes out of it.
The year 19.
Is that overtime?
So that's a wage also.
Okay. All right, we'll, we've already made our, our motion and approval, so we'll move on.
Thank you.
Next up is the Greenway Right-Away Engineering Crossroad. Trent?
Good evening, welcome back. Good evening, Board. Trent Newport with Crossroad Engineers. Since I was here last, we've been continuing to work on the design of the project, worked through environmental approvals, and now we are also ready to start on right-of-way acquisition, and that's why I'm here tonight. I have submitted to you a supplemental fee request. At the beginning of the project, when we gave our contract, we said that we did not know what the right-of-way was going to be at that time, so we would come back later once we had that identified. So that's the point that we're at now. We actually took this, because this is signed by both the Board of Works and the RDC, so we took this to the RDC in October, and now coming to the.
No other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agreement between NDOT and the City of Beech Grove pursuant to the Arlington Avenue Roundabout.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. I'm going to hand you my pen because they want to, they want it signed in blue. Okay. It's today. 11/4. Oh, Brad?
I'm sorry. If you need to, just call over. I'll give you. Thank you.
All right, next up, request to hire part-time DPW. Brad?
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the city hire Alex Shoemaker as a part-time worker at the Department of Public Works. His position will pay $14.79 per hour, will not exceed 58 hours per bi-weekly pay. There is money in the MVH budget to fund this position. If approved, Mr. Shoemaker would start on Tuesday, November 6th.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
What you going to do? What we do?
Part-time will most likely be on the back of a Packer.
Okay. I have nothing else.
No other further questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to, I ask for a motion to approve the Director's request to hire Alex Shoemaker part-time at DPW.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. I just give us a copy of Robertson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Next up, request to purchase two vehicles for Department of Public Works. Brad?
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the Department of Public Works be allowed to purchase two 2019 F, our Ford F-350 Super Duty Dump Trucks through the State of Indiana Quantity Purchase Agreement, number 15271. These F-350 Dump Trucks will replace two 1993 and 1994 Dump Trucks currently in service at DPW. Upon delivery, DPW would plan to auction off those trucks that are currently in service. The total cost of this purchase would be $92,225.32. The 2019 MVH budget has $70,000 allocated to purchase these trucks in capital outlays with, with Border Works permission, excuse me. I would like to pull the additional $22,225.32 from Sewage Works Repairs and Maintenance, appropriation 606-900-361.000. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
What you going to do? What we do?
Part-time will most likely be on the back of a Packer.
Okay. I have nothing else.
No other further questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to, I ask for a motion to approve the Director's request to hire Alex Shoemaker part-time at DPW.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Next up, request to purchase two vehicles for Department of Public Works. Brad?
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the Department of Public Works be allowed to purchase two 2019 F, our Ford F-350 Super Duty Dump Trucks through the State of Indiana Quantity Purchase Agreement, number 15271. These F-350 Dump Trucks will replace two 1993 and 1994 Dump Trucks currently in service at DPW. Upon delivery, DPW would plan to auction off those trucks that are currently in service. The total cost of this purchase would be $92,225.32. The 2019 MVH budget has $70,000 allocated to purchase these trucks in capital outlays with, with Border Works permission, excuse me. I would like to pull the additional $22,225.32 from Sewage Works Repairs and Maintenance, appropriation 606-900-361.000. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I do have a question.
Mm-hmm.
What is the State of Indiana Quantity Purchase Agreement? What is that?
They award that usually every couple of years to dealerships based off different brands, different vehicles. Currently, this, I think this dealership's had it for quite a few years. The Ford F-350 is through them, Advantage Ford. And so, the state does like a, kind of an open bid type thing where dealerships put their best price in, and then by going through this, you're, you're basically guaranteeing that you're getting the best price in the state. It'll also eliminates the, the need to bid anything out if you buy through the state QPA.
Okay.
And you were talking to me about, you did the floor this year, and.
Mm-hmm.
What, tell, I, I'm, what was that?
We had a little, we had about 20,000 extra in repairs and maintenance. We did the floor at Public Works in '18, so I, I thought in '19, you know, if we bought one truck, it was going to be 46,000, which was going to leave us, you know, with 24,000 extra, and I thought if I could pull what I used on the floor next year, and since I won't have to do something like that project, and put it towards the trucks, it would allow me to get a second one.
When would the, these trucks come in?
She said they're about 90 to 120 days out right now. So we'll be looking at February.
That'd be spring?
February, March, yeah.
Okay. And I had put pictures of the vehicles in here just for your reference. I don't know which one he would keep, but I don't know, you know. Any questions or comments of Board members?
We have three dump trucks now?
Correct. There's a 93, a 94, and a 95, so our plan was to do one over the next three years. And then with the overage, I thought if we could buy two next year, that'd be a good goal.
I have nothing else.
If not?
Is it an issue pulling that additional 22,000 out of the other, other fund, to appropriate that?
Did you say, will it be an issue?
Is it an issue pulling it out?
Well, I guess that's why I was bringing it to the Board, I wanted to make sure that the clerk was, that he didn't see any issues with me pulling it from a different budget and transferring it over, or however, you know, we would do that. I just know that's where the money would probably be most likely available to me.
We had, Brad and I had spoken about this, and there was a 750 truck or something that was involved in that, that he said that he thought he might be able to use. But in his everyday use, he thought two 350s would work better, and I said, well, as long as the 70,000, it fits into the budget, and so he stated that he could pull 22,000 from somewhere else in his budget, and I, I have no issue with that whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion to approve the Director's request to purchase two 2019 Ford F-350 Super Duty Dump Trucks.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Next order of business is request to surplus equipment, City Hall. Board, I have attached a list of items that I would like to have declared as surplus. This equipment has no value and is not being. This equipment has no value and is not being sold. Upon approval, the equipment will be discarded in a dumpster. Please take note that all hard drives have been removed from their respective towers and will be destroyed. This equipment was being stored near the server room in the storage area at City Hall, and was there before our administration began serving. And I wanted to add to that one table that's, all this stuff is sitting on, down there. So, that's not on that list, but I want to add that. But this is a list, and a lot of this was the wireless internet that was taken down, I don't know, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. But none of this has any value. And let's all open the floor up for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have nothing.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to surplus the equipment listed on Page Two and Page Three.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Next order of business is waiver of resolution, Churchman Roundabout Project. A meeting or so ago, the, we approved the consultant's purchasing property for the roundabout on Arlington Avenue. This is the first parcel that's being sold, and it's to Bomar, and this is a recommendation for waiver of resolution. I'll defer to City Legal for any type of explanation.
Well, they've done, they've done through parcels. Are we gonna do each individual?
No, just this one tonight.
Just the one, okay. Yeah, I think that's fine. I've worked with the project engineer on this, I reviewed all the documentation.
And this is for, I don't know the address at Bomar, but the offer, which was, has been accepted, is for three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. You'll see five more of these before we're done, for a total of six, so...
And this is the best way to do this, as opposed to domain, it's a very expensive, drawn-out process. So it's good that the people who are seeing the property have agreed to these fixed amounts.
So the floor is open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
If no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion for recommendation for waiver of resolution concerning the property, Robert Buchanan and Mark Buchanan and members of Buchanan Brothers LLC.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye and the motion carries. The last thing on your agenda sheet is, this is not for approval, this is just for public information. Recently, the BGPD began the process of replacing the roof on the main building on the police department property. Since the cost exceeds ten thousand, they had to receive a minimum of two quotes. Listed below and included with this letter are the estimates from two roofing companies. New Tech Roofing, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred plus. Insulation replacement at two dollars and fifty cents per square foot slash up to ten thousand square feet building if insulation needs replaced. The second quote was Bone Dry Roofing Company, sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-nine cents. BGPD has agreed to terms with New Tech and work should begin soon. This does not need Board approval, this is just general public information for transparency purposes. So I just wanted to pass that on, and it's included in here. So, have they started yet, Chief? The last item of business is not on the agenda, but I apologize, this came today. Recently, the Parks Department did a, a program with a group called Patronicity. They are subsidiary of the Indiana Housing and Community Development Association. And they are raising funds to purchase a new set of playground equipment. And this, this grant is a hundred percent match, so if they raised thirteen thousand, that was the goal, then Patronicity would, or the Indiana Housing and Community Development Association would give them thirteen thousand as well, for a total of twenty-six thousand. That happened, so this is the agreement, I had Craig look at it, and so this is for, I'm sorry. This is for, I just, I don't think we have to approve it, but I want to approve it for transparency purposes. So, Coach, are any, Craig, any thoughts on this?
Nothing, just chalks the lines for the, the requirements for the grant, like you said, thirteen thousand.
And I'll go ahead and sign off on it, but I just want to go ahead and get it approved for, for public purposes. It's create, creating places, and it's a project assistance agreement between the IHCD and the City of Beach Grove. So if there's not any questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
It's for transparency only.
Okay.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Should we vote on it?
You can.
Yeah. Yeah, let's go ahead and record it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. I'll get this signed and give it to you. All right, that concludes new business, and I appreciate everybody's patience. Comments from board members?
Tomorrow is Election Day, get out and vote.
I have nothing.
No further comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at six forty-seven PM. We will convene the City Council meeting within the next fifteen minutes. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, and at this time, we will convene our common council meeting for Monday, November the fifth, two thousand eighteen. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clark Treiser.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Peter Mascari, Council District Two.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council District One.
Chris Duffer, Council District Three.
Kevin Day, District Four.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This evening, under special presentations, we have four items. The first one is a proclamation for energy efficiency, and I'll read into the record. This was brought forward by the Greenscape Commission. So, proclamation, Energy Efficiency Day two thousand eighteen. Whereas, energy efficiency is the art of getting the same or better performance using less energy, all while cutting utility bills for residential business and industrial customers. And whereas, reliable, affordable energy is vital to our economic prosperity, and energy efficiency is the most productive and cost-effective way to meet our energy needs. And whereas, implementing clean energy policies and programs help boost economic opportunities and job creation while continuing to move toward a sustainable future. And whereas, cutting energy waste saves U.S. consumers billions of dollars on their utility bills annually, up to five hundred dollars per household from appliance efficiency standards alone. And whereas, smarter energy use reduces the amount of electricity we need to power our lives, which helps avoid power plant emissions that can harm our health, pollute our air, and warm our climate. Whereas, together, the residents of the City of Beach Grove can continue to contribute to our sustainability efforts by learning more about energy efficiency and practicing smarter energy use in their daily lives. Therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim November the fifth, two thousand eighteen, as Energy Efficiency Day in the City of Beach Grove, and urge citizens to join us in supporting our clean air goals, clean energy goals, I'm sorry, and moving toward more energy efficiency now and in the future. And at this time, I'll ask a representative from the Greenscape Commission to accept this proclamation. There you go, Amanda. Thanks for coming up tonight.
Yes, thank you very much.
Care to comment?
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to the next item, youth council report. Our principal, Liz Walters, is here. Liz?
So, one part of getting students more involved in athletics, extracurriculars, and work is that they are less likely to be able to join me in evening presentations. So unfortunately, you are stuck with just me again, but we are working that out with our student council and getting that ahead. So, I appreciate just bearing with me. October is a huge month for FFA. So one of the big things, I'm just pulling up my notes here on numbers. We did send about sixty students to the national convention just earlier, I believe, a week ago. Really good experiences for students there, they are able to compete in the competitions that they are assigned to. They visit the career expo and visit a lot of universities and college booths to get an idea of what their plans are for life after high school. And they've come back just really invigorated when they, when they see that, especially with everything we've got going on with planning for that. We administered the PSAT to all sophomores and juniors this year for the first time. Very excited to get those scores back, to take a look at what we might be planning for either the SAT or the ACT, as the state adopts that. We gave the ACT to all seniors, and we will look forward to fifty more days of testing this school year. I use "look forward" loosely, but that is the reality as we look for students to do graduation pathways. Our marching hornets, we did celebrate them getting to semi-state, they placed thirteenth, and unfortunately would have had to place in the top ten to move to state again this year. But their track record is pretty good, so we'll look forward to next year in their competition. In athletics, we will celebrate on Wednesday our fall athletics. Those programs did have quite a few successes. We sent three students out of sectional for cross-country. And then we congratulated two students, crowned sectional champions in boys tennis, Dean Hayward and Levi Miller. Tomorrow night, a huge event, we certainly invite everyone to come and celebrate our opening night for girls' basketball, but we will also officially name our court, the Matt English Court, tomorrow evening. So we have a presentation, and Matt and family will be there to celebrate during the two, the JV and varsity game. Any questions for me? Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next special presentation is the Redevelopment Commission two thousand nineteen budget and goals. Each one of you should have a copy of that in your packet. I don't think there's anyone here from the Redevelopment Commission, so you don't have to approve the goals, but the council has to approve the budget for the Redevelopment Commission. So, we can go through that, or we can wait until December. However you choose to, to, to proceed.
Will there be a representative from the RDC in December?
I will reach out to him. Don was gonna come, but he had to choose between coming here and his son's basketball game. I told him to go see his son's basketball game. So, and I didn't know if anybody else would come or not. So, we can proceed with it, we can go through it, or it's pretty simple, or we can wait until December.
So you just need for us to approve their budget, correct?
To their budget, you have, the council has to approve their budget.
I've read it, I don't have any issues with it, I'm, I'm okay.
They have four items, two thousand, or bond payments of five hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars, Greenway Works, sixty-five thousand, Crossroads Engineering, thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and the signage at the interstate, forty-four thousand. That's their four items in their budget for next year. And then they, on the next page is a, I don't know what you call it, financial history and projected by fund. This was prepared by Jeff Peters.
What, that signage at four sixty-five, who approves that? Who goes over that? Who decides what it looks like and who approves it?
Well, the RDC, since they are funding it, would be their approval, but our Public Works Director is reviewing that. And depending on what they want to do, if they wanted to actually put signs on the bridge, that would be half, that would have to be approved by the Federal Highway Authority along with Endot. So, if they put signs on the exits, that's one thing, but if they get up near the bridge, that's another. So I don't think they're gonna get up near the bridge. It's too, costs too much. So... So I'll defer to whatever the council wants to do.
I'm okay to make a motion to approve their budget. The RDC's budget.
Is anybody here in favor of waiting until December?
I'd, I'd kinda like to hear from Don.
Does he want to wait till December?
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, I think that answers that.
You want to move to motion to wait until December?
Yeah, we have, and I would agree with him, so that is, there's four right there that want to wait, so I would suggest that we do wait and hear from them.
Do you want a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to wait till December.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. I will ask them back for the, they do not meet as a commission in December, but I'll have someone come here.
Mayor, I would suggest, and when talking to him, I can do it myself, it would be nice to hear from him a little more often. They, they did pretty good in the past, being here in most meetings, but I've noticed that we haven't heard much from him lately.
You know, Councilor Lamping was just kinda showing me a brochure that she has from going to their meetings, maybe they could send that out to us via email. That'd be nice for everyone to see that.
The final presentation, under special presentation, is we have to have a public hearing on the additional appropriation that you're gonna hear later on this evening, General Ordinance Eighteen. And that is an appropriation to move funds from, help me, Dan.
Additional appropriations for basically police and fire overtime and some incidentals in that.
Okay, so we will suspend the regular council meeting and go right into the additional appropriation. There should have been a sign-up sheet, if anybody would like to speak. And Dan, if you could explain what the ordinance is for.
What it's for is we have a shortfall in overtime for both the police and fire, and we're not allowed to end up the year in the red, and so this is to prevent us from doing that.
We will open the floor up. Anybody sign up to speak, council?
Do both of you want to speak on the, on this agenda item or something else? Is Mr. Busby and Mr. Penobal?
Would you like for me to read the ordinance first? General Ordinance Number Eighteen, two thousand eighteen is an additional appropriation. Whereas, it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, be it ordained by the Beach Grove
annual budget, now therefore, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council of Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, Indiana, that for the expenses of taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purpose specified, subject to the law's governing the same. Fund name, Public Safety Fund 170. Department is Public Safety Fund 170. Major budget classification, personal services, $275,000. Total for Public Safety Fund 170 is $275,000. Whereas Public Safety Overtime exceeded the budget, Public Safety Fund 170, therefore an additional appropriation must be requested. There is money in 170 to fund this additional appropriation.
Okay, floor is open for anybody who wants to speak.
On the council or in?
Public. What's 170? It's a public safety tax and...
Which is normally used for what?
It's something new that's been created in the last couple of years. It can be used for, you know, several different things. It cannot be salaries. It can be overtime. It could be some other things that the public safety may need, whether it be police or fire.
Counsel, any comments from you before we close the public hearing?
So, with the Public Safety Fund, we're taking, we're transferring 275 out of it. I mean, is there a balance that we're removing that from?
I wouldn't know what the balance is. I just know there's more than enough to pull this 275 from.
Okay. That's all I need.
Any other comments? If not, we will close the public hearing and we will return to normal agenda items. Reading of the minutes for approval. We have two sets of minutes this evening, board. First set is dated Monday, October the 1st, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have a correction. Unless I read this wrong, it looks like on roll call for October 1, we've got Jim Brooks present and Jim Brooks absent.
Councilor Brooks was absent at that meeting.
Yeah, at least.
I will correct that.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments, or corrections? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes dated Monday, October the 1st, 2018, with the correction.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The second set of minutes dated Monday, October 15, 2018. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes dated Monday, October 15, 2018, as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 15, 2018, as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Public comments on the regular agenda, counselor?
Yes, Mr. Busby.
Okay. Okay? Of course.
Good evening, council. I'm Dave Penobal, and I live at 115 South 12th Avenue in Beach Grove. In the last fifteen days, sixteen days, y'all have received three emails from me with numbers, some from the clerk. I actually had a request in to find out about the ROI and the pilot, and I included you in that email because I wanted you to see what I saw, and hopefully you guys all got an opportunity to look at those numbers, so you're dealing with the reality of what we're looking at coming out of the sewer fund right now. The other two emails were about cost and about the increase in sewer rate, which I believe General Ordinance 14 is being brought back up again tonight. Unless we have definite numbers, unless we have a definite timeframe, nothing has changed from the last time that you tabled it. And with that being said, I want to remind everybody again, like I did before, we're all in this together. We don't have to be friends. Sometimes it's politics, sometimes it's friendship, sometimes it's business, but we're all in this together, and we need to work together to figure out what the best solution is for this community. So, with that, any comments, questions, or sarcastic remarks? Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's it, Mayor.
Is there anybody who would like to speak that did not sign up? We will go to committee reports, ABC. Ashley?
Good evening, council members. Today we approved, we had two automatic renewals. One was KPK Venture LLC, which is the new owners of Harvey's Tavern, and then we approved the VFW Post 562, 5626. And our next meeting is December the 3rd. And that's it. Any questions?
So, things are in line with Harvey's? Things are, as far as everything's coming along, as far as, there were some issues as far as citations or something, or some potential citations with Harvey's or something?
Uh, no, I don't, not, no.
Oh, okay. I just, you said you were working with them.
Yeah, because they purchased another liquor license for the wine and art side.
Okay, okay.
Which just requires them to have, when you have, when you have a three-way, the liquor license, you have to honor the restaurant side of it too, so you have to do like $100,000 in food sales. So, they actually have two of them now. The owners of Harvey's has two liquor licenses, so.
She's really ambitious with that business.
Yes, she is, so.
Good thing.
They all seem to be doing really well. I've been working with the guys at the brewery, so they are on a roll, and I'm really excited. They're getting their, beating the door with the restaurants and the bars in Beach Grove, so hopefully they'll be on tap with everybody else, so. Been really proud of them. They've been doing a great job, so.
Thanks for your work.
Oh, thank you.
You keep us well informed. We appreciate it.
Oh, I try to. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Get out and vote tomorrow.
You should have a Greenscape Commission report, Compliance Division report, and Public Safety report. The final committee report is financial. Dan?
Okay, on the financial, I do not have anything this evening. For the general public's knowledge, we've been going through a four-year audit through the State Board of Accounts since early October. On November the 27th at 10:30, any of the council members are invited to the exit interview, so it will be finalized by November the 27th, which sounds like a long time for them to be here, but they originally said until the end of December, so we'll be glad to get things back to normal, and next month I will have a financial report.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Move to unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. General Ordinance 13, 2018, is the ordinance that was tabled concerning residential housing after consultation with our city attorney. Well, I'll tell you what, I'll just defer to Legal for his opinion.
Sure. So, I met with Chris Pryor, and the name escapes me what organization he's from. What's the name of the?
Myboar.
There you go.
Myboar.
So, we met for an hour or so last week. I still think this ordinance needs some works. I think his position is, is that our nuisance ordinance covers a lot of what we're trying to keep from happening, but I'll give you an example of something that I think this would, down the road, would be, help us out, is having the registry, because some of these people, they have these junk properties and we can't find them. They, they appear under fictitious LLCs, and then we don't have a good address on them. So, I still think we should handle this at some point, sometime down the road. My recommendation would be to go ahead and repeal the existing Chapter 155, and then we pick it up in the next legislative year, next year.
Comments or questions?
Why would we repeal the existing if we're just waiting to redo it?
Because it's not being enforced. It's something that's basically useless, and if we're gonna pick this up next year, we're gonna have to repeal it anyway.
But...
Chris, if, there hasn't been one mayor, this, this current ordinance that we have on the books has, has been in place since the mid-1990s. As far as I'm concerned, it's unenforceable. It's too much government restriction, and government has the right to enter your property, which I disagree with wholeheartedly. And that is why, since I have been mayor, I will not enforce this orders, because I will end up in court, and I will lose every time. As far as I'm concerned, this ordinance is unenforceable. So, let's get it off the books, and let's come up with something that's workable.
I'd like to, I was thinking about something, I'd like to make a motion that General Ordinance Number 13 be withdrawn. I'll make a motion that General Ordinance Number 13 be withdrawn.
How about the current residential dwelling code, Bunny?
Based on what you said, I'll include the current residential.
So, the motion is to withdraw General Ordinance 132018 and repeal the existing ordinance.
And repeal Chapter 155.
That accurate?
I, well, don't you have to keep the existing ordinance?
No.
So, it would be, it would be...
It's already been heard twice, and we've tabled it. It's up for third and final reading, so you can amend the ordinance to repeal the current 155 along with the new, the new proposal.
And we can do that on third reading?
Mm-hmm.
Make any, yeah, you make any changes, so.
That would be the motion. So, motion to amend, to repeal Chapter 155, and to withdraw the rest of the ordinance. Motion to repeal?
I already made the motion.
Dave second.
Dave second, I'm sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. All right. General Ordinance Number 14, 2018, is up for approval on first reading only. Dan read it last meeting, so what I would like to do is open the floor up for any questions or comments.
You know, concerning what Dave wrote in his letters, are we trying out for these Ocre grants, these 600 and these $500,000 grants for repairs?
We are, we are currently in the process of doing a Ocre grant for facade replacement on Main Street. That's something that you folks have approved. During this timeframe, we are eligible for one more Ocre grant. The next process would be in June of 2019. You can apply for whatever you want, whether it be sewer, stormwater. We've had citizens come up and talk about grant funding for a fire station, but keep in mind, there's not a worse building in this city than the police station, so when you're, when you're talking about all these things, you know, hey, I'm all for getting federal funds back in here, no problem.
You think the police station's in worse shape than our sewers?
It has mold. It has a lot of mold. Have you been in it?
Yeah, I have been in it.
It has a lot of mold. Would you wanna work on mold?
I think mold can be remediated, and I think it can be remediated cheaper than the sewer system can.
When it's in cement, it's very hard to get rid of. I can tell you that for a fact, from dealing with claims over thirty years. My insurance companies in Texas won a, lost an $11 million claim.
So, let me get this straight, Dave. If I'm being very respectful here.
And I am too.
Your position is, you think we need to remediate the police station before we worry about getting a grant to fix the sewers?
Oh, I didn't, no, I'm just saying, it's something to be concerned with. I didn't say that. I just said it's very, it's something to be concerned with.
I'm talking to the mayor about the, the Ocre grants for the sewer, the 500 and the 600,000, and the mayor brought up that there's other things. There's the police station's one, but if we can only apply for one other, I'm wondering where we need to put that.
That would be up to you folks.
I spoke with Mike Klein-Peter before the meeting this evening. He tells me there's actually, you can have three at one time. One of them would be the Main Street. The Main Street is not even considered at the moment because it's not under contract. So, right now, you've got three open amounts that you can do. You can do stormwater for up to 600,000, I believe it is. It's a 10% match, 90-10. Sanitary sewer is 80-20, I believe it's 500,000, and then, like I say, that still leaves open the Main Street grant, but until one of them is under contract, they're all available. Like Dennis said, police, or fire station, police station is not eligible for Ocre grant, but...
Yeah, they are.
According to Mike, he told me they weren't. He said fire station only.
Yep. Fire station?
Fire station only, yeah. But anyway, there's options there. In order to do sewers, you may have to do the thing that they just sent out for the salary amounts of what people make, because some of our sewer is actually on people that live in Indianapolis. It's got to help everybody that's in that area.
That study that we commissioned and spent money on, is that what you're talking about?
Absolutely.
So, that's already been voted on though, right?
But you may have to do it again.
It's good for eighteen months.
It's good for eighteen months. The Main Street thing will not even go forward until, at the earliest, June of 19, so nothing's happening on it right now, anyway. So, he, he told me, he said if the council wanted to hear from him, he would be willing to come talk to him in December.
Well, I think it's, it was, it would be very important for us to hear about how to get, you know, $1.1 million for the sewers.
I, I wouldn't disagree, Duffer. I mean, I think we discussed, at length, just as a city, we need a grant writer on staff. I think there's a lot of money out there that is up for grabs that we're not taking advantage of.
I agree.
I mean, if we, you pay a grant writer, I mean, I don't know what they, they, average salary is for a grant writer. I'd say it's pretty, it's probably expensive, $65,000, $80,000 a year, but, I mean, you pay yourself back, we've got $1.1 million.
When you said that we, do we have to wait to a certain time period to apply for those, Mayor? Is that what you were saying?
The next open period is in June of 19.
Okay, so this last time around, we applied for the Main Street. Is that, I just gotta get my timeline straight. So, we still, if Dan is right, we still have two that we could apply for, but we have to wait till June.
Main Street is not under contract, Chris, and it will not be even eligible if they move forward, and nothing from Ocre is good before June of 19. That's what Dennis is trying to tell you. But in order to do that, you may have to do that thing we just did where they, an income survey again.
Well, but it's good for eighteen months, didn't we just?
But it's only good, I think, on the Main Street project.
You have income and environmental.
Right. The environmental, yeah, the environmental is approved. Yes, and that's approved at present time.
Okay.
And I know, like, Mike, he charges 8% and he's a grant writer, so he charges 8%. And I know like Mike, he charges 8% and he's a grant rider, so he charges 8% of the grant is what he has. So, Vito, so you're looking like 8% of that is something.
Well, I think that's something we need to pursue. I mean, we're, granted, last week, or last month, I should say, 15 days ago, one or the other, we talked about tabling this and maybe even selling the sewer, but there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts. We haven't yet figured out where that lost ROI would come from, how we would replace it, what we would continue to do, whether we have a buyer, whether the buyer wants to pay as much money as we want for the sewer. I know you said all that was negotiable, but...
You don't know that until you find out, until you ask.
But in the meantime, I think we need to be pursuing money for the sewer remediation or repairs if we can.
Sure. And then, in the meantime, we could also pursue a bid just to start the process for a sale as well.
Oh, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I also wanna reiterate, I mean, I spoke to motion to take bids less. I mean, I'm not completely one way or the other on the whole thing. I mean, you got, it's a negotiation. I go into a, buy a car, I slide that, slip a paper across the desk, you know, and he slides it back. If I don't agree, I walk out. I mean, it's...
But in the meantime, you're still keeping the car you're driving going.
Exactly. I still gotta pay for, you know...
Kell, like goes out, you gotta fix it. You can't wait.
Tonight, it's just General Ordinance 14. So, we'll focus on General Ordinance 14. It's up for approval on first reading. Any comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
Second.
Second. We'll vote individually on my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
General Ordinance Number 14, 2018 is up for approval on first reading. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record by title only.
General Ordinance Number 14, 2018 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove concerning fees charged for the operation of the City of Beech Grove Sewage Works Utility.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 14, 2018 is up for approval on first reading only. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion just to redraw it. I don't think that we should make any rate increases. And so, we hear what I U R C says. We should go after the bonds, or I'm sorry, the grants. And then also, we need to entertain bids.
But tonight, it's General Ordinance 14.
Yeah.
It's been read and there's a motion out there to approve. If nobody wants to make a motion, then the ordinance fails.
Let it fail.
Okay. Any, no motions? Then the ordinance fails. So, we will not bring this back up for a period of one year.
In the instance that we have to bring it back up, who can initiate that?
I'd have to refer to City Legal.
What do you mean?
All of a sudden, I U R C goes through and we are not collecting enough money to pay our bill.
That's part of the vote tonight, right?
So, can, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Craig, honestly. What is the Indiana code that states we can't bring it back up for a year? Do you know? Is, does that, is that code?
It may be, it's either in the code or in the city ordinance. You can't bring it until, so let's say an ordinance goes through and it fails, and then for a whatever reason, Jim shows up, it was 3-3, Jim shows up, we can't bring it up again at the next meeting. It's gotta wait till the next legislative year.
Could you please, you know, when outside of here, clarify that for us and find out when we could?
I mean, I'll send you the citation.
Because what Vito's saying is valid. If they go through and they raise our rates and we can't do anything for a year, that's not what our intention was.
Is our legislative year on a calendar year or is it a rolling year? So, with the legislative year, that means it resets January 1.
To the city attorney, can the language be different to make a difference in if there is a year pending? If it was worded differently, meaning the same thing? Just curious. That's something I can talk to you about later. Mayor, I know this is something you might wanna go by on, but it's what Chris brought up that I wanna kinda say now 'cause I think it's important. Our dependency upon the utility is huge. And I'm not here to debate sell or unsell. I don't even know who wants it. They're buying a bunch of old pipes is what they're buying. They're not buying a water treatment plant. They're not buying a huge garage. They're not even buying expansion room like you would in Westfield. So, I'm not sure who the buyer is and how much they're going to make up the difference. But this council or through our budgeting process, we oughta limit how much we depend upon the utility. Right now, if I'm right, is it 13 salaries basically? We need to limit it. We need to clean up what we have and that would make it, if it was gonna be sold, sure make it a lot easier on the city if we tried to clean that up. It's not gonna happen overnight because the last thing we want is any layoffs in this city, that period. But maybe there are some things we do. I just wanted to throw that out there for now that I just think we should straighten up that, how dependent we are on it. And that was all.
And I think the hard, honest truth of it is the utilities are gonna go up. Either we're gonna, either we're gonna decide to raise them or an outside force will raise them. They will go up.
That's true. There is one difference, though. The people of Beech Grove get a return on their investment when we own it. They also have police and firemen because of it. And it will go up either way. And I think that is a good point. You know, it always looks good if it comes from citizens' energy. Then look like, it looks bad coming from us. But the truth of it is, it's, the amount's gonna be pretty similar no matter who it comes from, most likely.
All right, we will move to new business. First item is park board appointment for the city council. Just a little while ago, Councilor Duffer distributed a letter recommending Harold Griggs for the, to serve on the park board as the council rep. And I told Chris before the meeting that we have another person here tonight that's willing to serve as well. I'm going to have opening on the park board as well, which is a mayor's appointment. So, it's up to you folks how you wanna proceed, but you can accommodate this request from the Councilor Duffer and I can accommodate Amanda Rubadu. So, I'll defer to the president pro tem.
Sounds like a pretty good deal. I guess how's, the rest of the council understand what the mayor's referring to?
Yep.
It looks like...
There's two appointees.
Two appointees and they both can get on. Personally, I'll just state, I think that sounds good.
Dennis, is your appointment open right now?
No, it'll be open in December.
January?
Oh, first of January.
Okay, all right. So, the only thing they got determines which one goes on now and which one.
You have, with the ordinance you created, you have two positions for appointment. One of them is Dan Norris and then whoever you appoint tonight, so.
I would think that the mayor's mentioned Amanda, that if the council would like to look at Harold Griggs.
Is Mr. Griggs here?
He could not make it tonight.
Chris, he is, he does, he has attended some city council meetings.
Yeah, they were at the last couple, he and his wife. They've been pretty diligent about attending them. And his property backs up to the park. The park's near and dear to his heart, so I thought that it would be a pretty good appointment.
I think if we were to fill one, I'm sorry, Chris.
And after the mayor and I talked and he's going to appoint Amanda, why, it works out well for both of these individuals. What were you gonna say, Vito?
So, are we putting Harold in first or Amanda in first?
I would suggest Harold since the mayor's gonna do Amanda, which...
Okay.
Okay, okay. I was confused. Sorry about that. I think it's great. I mean, if he lives right there, I mean, he's got a very big vested interest in the park and I think that's what we need.
Does anybody have any other names? I mean, he's the only two I'm aware of.
So, do we make a, do we make a motion or?
Make a motion to approve Mr. Griggs.
I'll make a motion to approve Harold Griggs for the parks board.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. He'll go ahead and be appointed and his term will end at the end of 2019.
Mayor, I appreciate you making that work out so well. Thank you.
And then Amanda, I'll point Amanda. I have, I'll have two appointments at the beginning of the year.
You know, since, since she's here, can you introduce her?
Yeah, good idea.
Buddy, you'll like this. Amanda and her husband, Mike, are diehard Indian fans. Indianapolis Indians.
All right.
And they live on North 15th and she works for my good friend, Mayor Cook, up in Westfield, so.
Hello, Amanda Rubadu. I, my day job is the economic development director for the City of Westfield. My husband and I have lived on 15th for about the last 10 years. He is the, he is a carman with Amtrak, so we have got some, we have some deep roots here. I have served as a member of the Greenscape Commission for the, for about the last six, eight months, so.
I used to work in Westfield. It's a long drive every day, isn't it?
It's a haul.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next order of business is General Ordinance Number 17, 2018, first reading. This ordinance was brought forward by Councilor Lamping concerning traffic flow on 23rd Street and the citizen that requested that is in the audience tonight, so I'll defer to Councilor Lamping for an explanation on the ordinance.
Well, the, a lot of the citizens over in that area have been concerned, are concerned about just the flow of traffic coming off of Churchman and with the speed. And there's a lot of, of course, the school buses stops and just a real concern about safety and slowing traffic down. So, this was brought to my attention that a three-way stop would be beneficial to kind of bring some of that traffic, slow some of that traffic down and hopefully avoid any tragedies in that area as far as accidents, so.
Is this the street that Mr. Busby had brought to our attention?
No.
No, this is 23rd Street.
And then, the gentleman, Mr., is he here?
Garrett.
And you're on, he's on the board zoning now, correct?
You wanna, you wanna speak?
No, please do, yeah.
Good evening, council. I'm David Garrett and I live at 414 North 23rd Avenue. And I've been there now for just a little over a year. And also, since I've been there, I've noticed, you know, that the traffic, as it comes off of Churchman headed towards Southern Avenue and also a lot of the traffic that comes from Southern Avenue headed towards Churchman, they tend to get a little bit above the 25 that is on pole that is, you know, posted as you turn the corner. So, they tend to exceed that a little bit. And we have a lot of children who play on, you know, bicycles and they're out there in the street and playing off and on. So, I just, you know, I just thought it was a good idea that, you know, we need to step forward with this.
I thank you for calling that to our attention.
No problem.
Chief, did you?
Yeah.
Mark, do you have any issues with any of this or?
Well, the only issue is that, there is a parking area, or no parking area, you put up a stop sign, 20 feet, and it could have a few of the some of the residents that they, not in the park where you put the sign, so that 20 feet could have a few of some of it, that's after the residents.
Yeah, they didn't seem to have, yeah. I haven't heard, I, the feedback, I haven't gotten anybody's have opposition to that.
If the council approves this, is it something that, for the most part, looks like could be worked out or?
I guess I'll come up here and talk to you. It's, it's the same thing that we're working out, or we did work out at Yazoo and Andrea where they put up the stop sign and then we had to inform the residents that they had a no parking area there and the street department painted the curb yellow. And this time of year, I don't know if it could be painted yellow because of the weather and it was thick. So, other than that, I don't have an issue with it. We don't have an issue with it, other than we just have to inform the residents and make it known that that area can't be parked in.
And I don't know, Mr. Garrett, I mean, I don't notice, I've been, I've been in that area several times that there are a lot of people that park along that stop. That would be a problem.
The only time that it would come is if Garrett would be on Saturday. The person that lives across the street from me has a lot of people who come there and they park and then they go to church from there. So, that would be the only time that it would be an issue. There's, unless you don't want to park up there on the other side of the street, it'd be on the west side, Bob Newton, I believe, lives there from time to time. People park out front of his house, not very often.
But there's other space. It's not like they're gonna be without finding a place to put their vehicle.
No.
Yeah, yeah. And I think they, the risk versus, the benefits of this versus the risks, I think they outweigh and they would be accepting of that.
Another one you referred to that, I mean, it's working well right now.
It took a while to get the residents to understand what the parking was, but again, we work with them and we'll work with this.
And being accustomed to something new can be, well, I know in one area, some people might not realize there's something's changed, so that's always gotta be aware. But, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
General Ordinance 17, 2018 is up for approval on first reading only. And at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 17, 2018 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove concerning through streets and stop streets. Whereas often, drivers use 23rd Street as a route to get from Churchman Avenue to Southern Avenue in the neighborhood to the north. And whereas although the speed limit is posted, drivers for the most part speed through this area. And whereas a bus stop is located at 23rd and Detroit and the neighborhood has an abundance of young children in the area. And whereas at least one area resident has approached the council representative for this area asking for help with slowing down traffic. Now therefore, be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove to address traffic schedules. Now therefore, be it further affirmed that the council, common council desires that the following amendment be added to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Add the following to Chapter 77, Schedule 2, Subsection A, intersection 23rd and Detroit, controls description, stop sign westbound Detroit, northbound 23rd, and southbound 23rd. Now therefore, be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Now therefore, be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances and no other chapter. Now therefore, be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, pro tem attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the ordinance? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I do have a question. So, when we put these stop signs in, it might be a question for chief. Where you guys put some in on Main Street? I'm trying to think where it was.
Tyson.
Yeah, those things came out of nowhere for me. I mean, I remember, I think I, first three times, I blew through them and I'm like, whoa. Are we gonna put some type of, because I know they had the reflective, like carousel on top, yeah. Okay. It didn't draw mine, but, I mean, yeah.
Maybe that's why they want you to slow down.
Yeah, well, I knew.
That's the idea.
30, maybe, 25? Yeah, okay. Just wanna make sure.
Motion to approve General Ordinance 17, 2018 on first reading only.
I'll make a motion to approve General Ordinance 17, 2018.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on second reading only at the December meeting. General Ordinance 18, 2018 is up for approval on first reading this evening. And at this time, I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance into the record.
General Ordinance Number 18, 2018. General Ordinance Number 18, 2018, additional appropriation. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council of Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, Indiana, that for the expense of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purpose specified, subject to the law's governing the same. Fund name, Public Safety Fund 170, Department, Public Safety Fund 170. Personal service, $275,000. Total for Public Safety Fund, $275,000. Whereas public safety overtime extends the budget in Public Safety Fund 170, therefore an additional appropriation must be requested. There is money in the Fund 170 to fund this additional appropriation.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council members?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from both chiefs why they're so in arrears on overtime.
Mayor and council, good evening. I'd like to explain to you a little about overtime this year. First, for the first of the year, we're short two firefighters. So getting the two firefighters on board and getting them to recruit class, they were not out of recruit class till August 13th. So we went a good eight months with two firefighters down on shift. We had a civilian paramedic that left Beach Grove February of this year and that position was not replaced. So that's three positions down. If you count a 24-hour shift per month, that's about 720 hours short per month. Plus, on average, if you'd just say seven months, that's about 5,040 hours without personnel on station. So if you take a look at how we're short, if you take a look at our normal vacation and how our shifts are staffed, we come up short personnel. We have to have personnel on the engines. We staff a minimal staffing at four and three and we're doing our citizens a disservice. We should have our engines staffed at four and four at a minimum each and every time they roll out of the station. We have ran short to save on overtime. We have ran three and three, which is, in today's fire service, is criminal. We have short-staffed our engines to save the city overtime money. If we look at our overtime, it's 2.25% of our overall hours to date that was paid out in overtime. 2,767 hours was paid in overtime. We have firefighters who have called in sick, which is 1.75, 1.75%, which is 2,150 hours of sick time that was used. If you take in account how short we were with the sick time, we've had firefighters on light duty for extended period of time. That's why we're short the overtime. I commend our officers that work each and every day to ensure our equipment staffed to the best possible abilities that we have. We have worked extremely hard this year to provide the service and have both engines in service and the medic in service. So we've worked extremely hard to keep our citizens safe, to keep these engines staffed. That's why we are short the overtime money.
So with that being said, is there any type of, I know you have to get accreditations and everything from whatever fire service accreditation. Could you guys get in trouble for running short staff like that? I mean, are there going to be any repercussions that you could?
There's repercussions each and every time these guys turn a wheel and go off the station.
Well, yeah, I'm saying, I know the personal risk.
The personal risk. The engines, when we respond out on a fire call, NFPA requires we have a minimum of 28 firefighters on scene within eight to 10 minutes. Six to eight minutes. And we couldn't achieve that without assistance from IFD. And each time our apparatus roll out on a fire run here in Beach Grove, we utilize IFD and they utilize us also. It's a trade-off. We couldn't physically do the job without them and vice versa.
I understand from what you're saying is that they're already pushing everyone to the max. The repercussions of not having a fully staffed unit is the public safety, is the lack of safety for us, the citizens that they're serving. That's the repercussions of not having these trucks fully staffed.
Sounds to me though like we're running more than the city can afford. Maybe we need to go down to one engine.
And who would you like to give up calling and taking care of if you increase your availability of services?
Just like Indianapolis fills in now, I believe that it would be filled in then.
So do you think we need to go down to one engine for the city, Chris?
I'm thinking maybe we do.
And as far as our staffing?
Well, think about it, chief. I mean, we've been sitting here talking about the sewer and the return on investment for the sewer and how that money's very likely going to go away. We're talking about selling the sewer. That ROI is not going to come back. How are we going to support everyone that we have when that ROI is gone? Already we're at $275,000 in arrears and the chief of police hasn't even spoken yet and given his side.
So you're interested in saving the city money per year is what I understand?
I'm interested in making a balanced budget.
If we can have a balanced budget, save the city money each year and we're running one engine, you'd be happy with that?
I would have to look at the numbers, but yeah, that's one solution.
Is it time, I mean, are you asking, should we look for alternative ways to staff the fire department this time?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, is I sit up here and you know, I understand your position. You're the fire chief. My position is I represent the people of District 3. The people of District 3 pay their taxes, they pay their sewer bill. Part of that ROI goes to you guys, part of the other taxes go to you guys. But we're $275,000 in arrears. Now, how do we justify to these taxpayers that we're not cutting? That we're not able to pay our bills and make a balanced budget? I'm open to suggestions. We've talked about this before.
Hey, Dan, or Chris, I'm sorry. My question is, you're saying we're $275,000 of arrears. But everything I read on this is we had this money. It was setting in Public Safety Fund 170.
But it's not a budgeted item, that's the difference.
I also kind of wonder, how much money do we have in Public Safety Fund 170? And why is it just setting there?
It's being used.
Well, I guess we had this huge argument about salaries and we didn't have the money to do it. But we have Public Safety Fund 170 that had this money.
Let's hear the chief of police and see what he says.
Before you let me go, while you're on the topic, we had Councilman Temple up here stated, look, you might have layoffs in the future. I have you talking about going down one engine. The union had other suggestions. They've talked to some of the council members about. I think it's time that you let them speak and they can be heard.
Chief, before you go, I said, we don't want to lay off. My words, we don't want to lay off.
So you don't want to lay off?
No, no, no. I'm not here to entertain Chris's question right now. You said by name and I said that the reason, Chris has got a little bit of future stuff going. That's the what if, some of it is. What I said was, is if we lose the salaries for 13 people, it just doesn't come from anywhere. That's why I stand, it's a total different issue. I said the last resort or the resort we never want is to lay off. So I don't want walking away thinking that I'm saying layoffs are an answer. I did not say that.
I just want, I'm glad you clarified that for me.
When I said it the first time, I thought it was kind of clear.
Haven't we appropriated money in the past for this?
Yes, we have. It's normal. We only had $50,000 when we started off in overtime this year. Our overtime was $100,000. It was cut over the years. We've tried to do real good in our overtime this year. I try to explain why we're short. This last payroll period, we only had a total of 18 hours overtime for the two weeks. It's getting better. It takes time to adjust. We had to get our new people on board. I'm going to come back. I'm going to ask the Board of Works for a civilian medic for next year. Try to get them on board and get things going, cut back on overtime and we should be in pretty good shape.
Chief, one other question. How much money does the fire department bring in to the city with paramedic?
With a med bill, we have brought in 1 point, over 1.2 million for the year off of our ambulance revenue. Next year, I don't do the projections, but I believe we're in the budget for revenue for 1.5 million. So the fire department's anticipated. The city's asked us, hey, we need 1.5 million from you, meet the projected revenue. It's difficult to do if we don't staff the apparatus. So we have to have staffing. We have to have civilian medics. We have to have guys staff our engines. If those items don't happen together, we can't function as we need to.
And just to clarify, 1.2 million, that's gross. That is not any expenses taken out there or anything else. And we have other ways. We contractual agreement through St. Francis for our paramedics where we could have brought them on a lot cheaper than paying this overtime.
The contractual employees can't ride the fire apparatus, so. So if we have fire apparatus that needs staff, we have to staff that with overtime. Our main goal this year, we have, we said, hey, look, we need to cut back on the overtime. We offered the position that was open on the paramedic ambulance to St. Francis program first. You know, we only have two civilian medics. They can't work overtime all the time. They will get burned out and they're absolutely making too many runs. We've offered that to St. Francis to cover some, that back staffing and they've tried. They've done a pretty good job trying to get that ambulance staffed so we can team, meet the needs of the community. They can't do it all the time as a part-time position. So we're competing with everyone else in the county also for these personnel. There's only a limited number of paramedics that work part-time if you think about the county as a whole. A lot of these other services are hiring. White River Township Fire Department, they're hiring civilian paramedics, they're hiring firefighters. You have all of Hamilton County hiring firefighter and paramedics. You have Westfield Fire Department doing lateral transfers in the fire department. We're competing against these guys. Also IFD is doing a class where they're hiring over 90 firefighters. So that definitely decreases the pool of people that we have.
What does Beach Grove Fire Department do as far as recruiting activities? I mean, do we advertise? Do we post on Facebook?
Yes, we advertise. We do job fairs. We post on Facebook and word of mouth and people that, these other firefighters and, you know, we get out there and post our information out, send it out through email.
So in comparison to some of the other departments that you've mentioned, how do you feel our recruitment efforts are compared to those?
They're good, but we can't compete with other people's salaries. When you're competing against salaries and benefits, it gets difficult.
Okay. Thanks.
I just want to say that I represent the people of, the citizens of District 2 and I know, and I think I know them, District, excuse me, District 1, sorry. So I apologize. I apologize, District 1. So I think that I can speak for them and if we didn't have the fire services and they were not coming and they had an emergency and no one was coming to their home to provide what they needed, I think that they, the tax money is what they would be thinking they're using. That tax dollars is very well put to use if they were there to respond to their emergency needs. So, you know, on behalf of our fire, I'm sure that the people of my district would applaud and appreciate everything that you do and understand.
Thank you. Any other questions for me?